Would you want to say hi to the mayor?
Hi.
Hello, how are you? It's good to see you.
She wanted to say hi.
I'm glad she did. Future, future mayor right there.
Alright.
I'm having a really nice dog without his beard. Hello.
Say hi Jojo. You're gonna be shy now.
Well, that is a great way to start our evening. I think everyone is here, so we'll go ahead and let me see, who am I missing?
Commissioner Jones.
Okay, we'll give it one more moment for him to join us. Alright. Well, it's a, it's just a minute after seven, so I think I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order and get us started. This is our city commission meeting for October 27th. And so as we start off our meeting, I'm gonna ask you to join me in a moment of silence and then we'll do pledge of allegiance before moving to roll call. So if you would please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, with the best of our beloved people.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next we will have roll call.
Commissioner Repart?
Here.
Commissioner Isasi?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Present.
And Mayor Bliss?
Yes.
I, I texted Commissioner Jones.
Okay.
I think I'm back, so.
Alright, I anticipate he'll be joining us, so we'll, we'll go ahead and get, just keep moving along the agenda and hopefully he'll join us. Um, so commissioners, we have three opportunities for public comment tonight. Um, first one is public comment on items that we're gonna be voting on tonight that we talked about and discussed and voted on in one of our earlier meetings. Um, then we have a scheduled public hearing tonight related to the Smart Zone. Uh, so that is, uh, Smart Zone Finance Authority, uh, Certified Technology Park Boundary. So that's a scheduled public hearing, that's the only scheduled public hearing we have tonight. And then at the end of the night, we have the regular public comment period. Uh, so for those of you watching, if you want to call in for public comment, you can call four, five, six, three thousand or three one one. For the first opportunity, you would hit one and then one. For the Smart Zone public hearing, you'd hit one and then two. And then for the last opportunity, um, you'd hit one and then five. So with that, I'm gonna introduce you to, um, Lily Beth Perez, who is with us tonight and is available as a translator if needed. Lily Beth?
Thank you, Mayor Bliss. Good evening, everyone. If you need interpretation services to address the city commission, I will be able to assist. Please dial four, five, six, three thousand or three one one and choose the option you'd like to sit down tonight. Buenas noches. Si necesitas servicios de interpretación para dirigirse a la comisión de la ciudad, estaré disponible para ayudarte. Marque el cuatro, cinco, seis, tres mil o el tres once y elija la opción en la que desea hablar. Gracias.
Thank you so much. Um, so it sounds like Commissioner Jones is having a little bit of a technical issue, so hopefully, oh, there he is. It's one of those days. Alright, good to have you join us, Commissioner Jones, just a couple minutes into the meeting, so we are. Payback, payback. Is that karma? Alright, that will take us to our first opportunity for public comment tonight, and this is public comment specific to items that we're voting on, so we have the agenda before you. Um, there are a number of items that are on our agenda that we discussed earlier today. Uh, so what we ask for this public comment period is that in addition to saying your name and the city that you live in, uh, that you be explicit about what item you're speaking about, uh, and then you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. So I'm gonna turn it over to Daniel to see if there's anyone in the queue for the first opportunity for a public comment.
Here comes the first caller.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the item you wish to speak upon. Your time starts now.
Good evening. Watch out Miller reporting, Grand Rapids. Uh, for some housekeeping, uh, under, uh, minutes, which would be, uh, number five. The minutes are published by the Grand Rapids Press, uh, and it's been a reason for these decades, uh, probably in accordance with state law. Is it legal for them to publish in, out of state in Ohio, in Cleveland, and still, uh, keep that account? It's a rather big account, and, uh, Cleveland, uh, already saw our baseball team, the Indians, and who played here in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, on your property on, on South Market, uh, that will be north of Wolfie. So, uh, again, this is a major expenditure, uh, of your meetings, uh, publishing it every week, uh, in the so-called Saturday paper. The, uh, press, uh, cuts out half of its advertisers of its inserts on Saturday. I buy them every, every week, uh, after the commission meeting, and they're ripping off advertisers. And again, uh, the press picked, uh, picked up that property about nineteen sixty for a put, sixty-one maybe? And, uh, they sold it for twelve land, they made a twelve million dollar property, that's the one fifty-five, now four, four hundred Monroe property. Uh, the, uh, their, that vendor, major vendor is, uh, anti-Catholic, they're Catholic, out of sports section. Notre Dame is number three in the land, number three out of some five thousand schools, and there's nothing in the sports section on Sunday, Monday. It's still hyped, but that may be corrupt and maybe paid off some some passion by Michigan State. Pathetic, uh, against red buckers and yet just keep on sparty this, Spartans that. So, uh, again, this is a major, I, I don't think, uh, you should allow them to escape, but it's probably three dozen jobs out there still working, uh, out three mile, mile. And it's scandalous that they're not gonna be publishing, uh, anymore in this city. And you've nurtured them for decades, uh, you also subsidized them when they first came over, uh, mathfully on one fifty-five Michigan. Again, now at one sixty-nine Monroe. Thank you ever so mu- please look into this. Thank you ever so much, Watch Out Miller reporting.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the item on which you wish to speak. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Maggie Smith. I live in the third ward in the city of Grand Rapids. I'm calling, um, because I was alerted that there may be a vote tonight that would give money to the Grand Rapids Police Department. Um, I'm now looking through the packet right now, I'm not sure where that vote would be. Um, but regardless, if there is any vote that would give more money or power, um, to the GRPD, uh, I think it's clear what the citizens of Grand Rapids want, um, that the GRPD is not in the business of solving, fixing, or, um, making our community better. Um, anything related to gunshot technology within the Kent County, um, Commission, or anything related to COVID funds could go to better use. And please listen to the over two thousand, uh, people in our city that have asked you continually, um, to please defund the police. Thank you.
Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device?
Yeah.
Thank you. You have three minutes with the city commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the item on which you wish to, on which you wish to speak. Your time starts now.
Alright, hi, my name is Kellen. I live in Grand Rapids City. Um, I wanted to speak on, um, agenda items eleven, one, and eleven, three. Um, so the commission is set to vote on an amendment, um, to the Clear Indoor Air Ordinance, which is detailed in your agenda as follows. On September fifteenth, twenty twenty, the city commission adopted a resolution scheduling a public hearing to be held on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, ordinance to amend chapter seventy-one of Title Six of the Code of the City of Grand Rapids, currently titled Clean Indoor Air Ordinance, to establish tobacco-free parks and recreation areas. Included with the amendment papers is a definition for a recreation area defined as, "Any public or private area open to the public for recreational purposes, whether or not any fee for, or a fee for admission is charged, including but not limited to streets, sidewalks, amusement parks, et cetera." Um, this is worded in such a way, um, to mean that people can be arbitrarily punished for smoking a cigarette on a sidewalk that they're walking on. This is an unbelievable breach of jurisdiction on people's everyday lives, and is just another way that Karens can ruin the life of a black, brown, or a poor person, because this amendment would specifically allow for people to report others that are breaching the rules stated within the amendment. Don't get me started on the fact that the group pushing the amendment wants to remove golf courses from being a recreation area. This makes me think that some people don't want the rules applied to them. If you really want to have clean air in the city, and by extension indoors, and one way to do that is by vastly reducing the amount of cars that are in the city, which arguably pollute the air more than cigarettes or vapes. The city is fifty percent parking lots, though, so I can see how that would cut into your revenue. The funds that would be used for signage would be astronomical itself. This money can be used in our communities and would go a lot farther than just arbitrarily punishing the constituency. Um, I also, uh, speaking on, um, eleven, three, I also want to express my distaste for the fact that you are, and again, funding the GRPD when our communities, especially the third board, need economic help, which is being withheld and going to the police. Um, so that's a very, uh, bad move, I feel. But, um, that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you wish to speak upon. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thanks, Daniel. Uh, good evening, commissioners. This is Landon Bartley, First Ward resident. Thank you for your, uh, your continued work and solid events. Uh, I also want to thank the city clerk and his team in advance, uh, for their work on the upcoming election. Um, this morning's update was really excellent, and I feel very confident that the city of, uh, Grand Rapids citizens are well served, so. But the reason I've been calling tonight, uh, is in regards to, I don't, I'll let you point to it, uh, a cleaner ordinance. And also because I didn't want you guys to miss me too much. Um, public health is important. I'm generally very much in favor of the ordinance. Uh, however, as you know, I sent an email suggesting that non-smoked, uh, consumption of cannabis, uh, really did not be prohibited in a public place, uh, especially at the park. Uh, but rather urging the city to allow state law to govern public consumption as it currently does. State restrictions on cannabis consumption are quite likely to change in the future. Um, my, my concern is that the ordinance that's currently proposed, um, particularly in, uh, I believe it's like, it's actually six point four, or six point four E. Uh, this, this simply adds another layer of complexity, and frankly, one that I'm concerned could lead to selective enforcement, or rather selective calls for enforcement, um, by the public. Obviously, I, I don't have access anymore to any records to know if there's been many or, or any complaints from public about cannabis consumption parks. I do know, however, that there are almost two hundred fifty thousand registered medical cannabis patients in Michigan, uh, and about eight thousand within Kent County alone. Especially since this commission voted this morning to re-up bonfires, uh, for college kids until May. It seems somewhat strange to me to vote on the same day to restrict an activity that's, that's far less impactful. Um, and then finally, for the record, I want to note that at least one letter expressing concern about, uh, the cannabis prohibitions and ordinance was submitted to the commission for the October thirteenth public hearing. It wasn't referencing the same staff report for today's. To sum up, um, I guess I'm asking to have the commission please consider removing the prohibitions on cannabis consumption in this ordinance. State law, all restrictions, there's not any evidence that public cannabis consumption is currently a problem that needs to be addressed locally, so thank you again for your work. Bye.
Thank you, Landon. Caller, you're on with the city commission. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live and the agenda item you wish to speak upon. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Cherie. I'm a citizen of Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm calling to express concern about the amendment made to the Clean Air Ordinance. Um, I've reviewed the content and I am concerned by the vagueness in the language and the potential interpretation it would allow for. Um, check, check seven A states that no person shall smoke in any public place, whether open or closed. By definition, a recreation area is any public or private area open to the public and includes streets and sidewalks. If the commission plans to ban smoking on sidewalks, they are exerting an abuse of power. This would put citizens at risk of harassment and is a likely target for the homeless individual living on a sidewalk. Um, if the commission does not intend to impose such severe restrictions, I encourage they revise the amendment for clarity so individuals cannot interpret the ordinance at their convenience. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, caller. There are no more callers in the queue, Mayor.
Thank you, Daniel. We'll go ahead and move along then to approval of our minutes from our October thirteenth minute meeting. Uh, can I get a motion? So moved.
Support.
Alright, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, I'll turn to our city clerk to call for the vote.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
One question. What are we voting on?
Uh, we're counting the minutes from our last meeting.
Alright, I missed, I misheard you. Yes.
Uh, okay, let's see, where am I? Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. Alright, commissioners, next that will take us to petitions communications, and we have two items tonight.
Uh, communication received from Misty Eves, Disability Associate, or Disability Advocate and West Michigan Cannabis Guild Board Member, expressing opposition to the Clean Air Ordinance.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Landon Bartley, Principal and CEO of Proxima Collective, and urging the city commission to allow for an exception for non-smoked cannabis consumption to be included in the Clean Air Ordinance.
And that is also received and filed. Alright, next that will take us to reports of city officers.
First one is Comptroller's Report for the period of October one, twenty twenty, through October fourteen, twenty twenty, in the amount of eighteen million, nine hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and two cents.
That is received and filed.
And the Treasury Report for the period of September twenty-six, twenty twenty, through October nine, twenty twenty.
And that is also received and filed. Alright, commissioners, next that will take us to our consent agenda. So if you are not familiar with our consent agenda, these are items that we discussed and voted on at one of our earlier standing committee meetings where they were voted on unanimously. So tonight with one, uh, voice vote, we'll adopt those items. Uh, so can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Alright, moved and supported. Uh, commissioners, any questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, we'll turn to our city clerk for the vote.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. Okay, commissioners, that will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have three ordinances before us tonight, so we'll start with the first one.
The first one is an ordinance amending section one of the budget ordinance twenty twenty dash fifteen for fiscal year twenty twenty-one amendment number eight.
Alright, can I get a motion? Support.
Support.
Alright, moved and supported. Commissioner O'Connor, uh, from our fiscal committee, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, there's five items tonight on, uh, this, uh, ordinance. Uh, the first two are related to grants, uh, received by the police department in collaboration with other departments. Uh, one is related to, uh, distracted driving enforcement, and the other is for, uh, operating while intoxicated and seatbelt enforcement. Both of those are no match grants, uh, to the city. Uh, item three is a amendment to the public library budget where they're consolidating four positions, uh, and adding one additional position. Um, number four is, uh, Community Development Department, uh, is adding an indigent defense coordinator. And, uh, the last item is just a realignment, uh, which we do every year for our vital streets dollars from one fund to another so that they can be expended.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner, uh, commissioners, any questions or comments? Alright, seeing none, I will turn to our city clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. And commissioners, can I get a motion to give this immediate effect? Support. Alright, moved and supported. City clerk, you want to call the vote on that?
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. Alright, let's take those to our second ordinance to be considered tonight.
It's a consideration of an ordinance for, uh, eight fifty-one Leonard Street Northwest and eight fifty and eight sixty Courtney Street Northwest to SD PRD, Special Districts, Planned Redevelopment District, to facilitate a residential development.
Well, support.
Alright, moved and supported. Commissioner Lanier, you want to tell us about this?
Sure, Mayor. Um, on the thirteenth of October, the commission established tonight as the date to consider the rezoning of eight fifty-one Leonard Street, which is currently TNTVA, Traditional Neighborhood, Traditional Business Area, and eight fifty and eight sixty Courtney Street, which are TN LDR, Traditional Neighborhood Low Density Residential, to the SD PRD, which is Special District Planned Redevelopment District. And it's, um, it's tied to a development project from the, um, Genesis Nonprofit Housing Corporation.
Alright, uh, commissioners, any questions or comments? I see Commissioner Repart's hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I got a chance to go and walk the site with the executive director of Genesis, um, last week. And, uh, it's a beautiful project, thirty-eight units of housing, probably nineteen of them will be for supportive housing for people, thirty percent AMI and below. The design is just fantastic, and they're also gonna preserve our historical building in the process. Uh, also, they're gonna let us use their parking lot for our next gun buyback, so that's the location for the next one, so. Really, all around, they want to use that space for the community until it gets off the ground. It's a beautiful thing.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I see, uh, Mr. Colson has joined us, uh, in case we have any questions. Uh, but you're absolutely right, this is a, this is an important project. Alright, commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner O'Connor, did you have any? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, Commissioner Repart, this is a great project. Uh, I'm super excited to see, uh, see this, uh, happen. The preserve, preservation of the, the beautiful building, as well as, uh, the elimination of a, a sea of asphalt into something that, uh, is, uh, is really productive for the, for the corridor. Uh, I think that a lot of people are really excited about this.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, commissioners. Uh, Mr. Colson, anything to add?
No, I was just here in case you had some questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, I don't see any other questions or comments, so we'll turn to our city clerk to call the, call the vote.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
And Mayor Bliss?
Yes. Thank you, commissioners. Alright, next that will take us to the third ordinance to be considered tonight.
The third ordinance is a, um, ordinance amending chapter seventy-one and Title Six of the Code of the City of Grand Rapids, currently titled Clean Indoor Air Ordinance.
Can I get a motion? Good. Can I get a motion first to bring it up on the floor?
Yes.
Motion support. Alright, moved and supported. Um, I see that, uh, Mr. Mark Quat is here with us tonight in case we do have any questions. Uh, but I'll open it up. I know some of you, uh, have.
Mayor, you, you froze. Uh, we didn't.
Am I back?
You're back now.
Okay, yeah, I don't know why my computer does that sometimes. Um, so I, I know some of you, uh, had some concerns about this, so I'll open it up for, uh, discussion. If you have any questions for our park director, you're welcome to ask. Uh, Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion tonight. I know we had a public hearing about it last night. Um, I certainly echo some of the concerns that were presented during our, uh, public comment period earlier today. Um, I find it, uh, you know, a bit disingenuous in the sense that, uh, on our consent agenda tonight, for the second time, uh, we unanimously adopted an ordinance, uh, that allows for additional outdoor fires to happen in Grand Rapids, and I'm a fan of outdoor fires in Grand Rapids. But, uh, at the same time, we're, we're now, you know, acting as a nanny state, uh, around the, uh, ability of people to, uh, you know, I can go to a, as a college student, I could go to, uh, an outdoor bonfire, but I couldn't hit my vape pen. Um, I find that, uh, you know, if we're, if we're really concerned about indoor, about air, air quality in Grand Rapids, uh, you know, this is just, these things don't go together. I also find it humorous that, uh, you know, we have a golf course, uh, I think I've probably smoked cigars on a golf course with a couple of these folks on this meeting tonight, um, that we're gonna, then we're gonna say, you can no longer smoke on a golf course, even though I think there's probably someone gonna make an amendment to remove a golf course, uh, as a special use, which, again, I find we're picking winners and losers as government, and that's, uh, that's also not right. I know my colleague, uh, from the third ward, Mr. Lanier, is a big fan of that golf course, and, uh, you know, I think the ability of people to, uh, to enjoy a round of golf in a cart with a cigar in their mouth, uh, you know, may be diminished by the fact that, uh, you're gonna ban people from having that, uh, that cigar while they're, uh, while they're cruising, uh, eighteen holes. Uh, and so I'd hate for the, you know, people to make the choice to then go to a, another golf course in a competing community, uh, or a private course, uh, to, to, to enjoy the game of golf, uh, and reducing the revenue possibility for, for, for beloved Indian trails. Um, you know, I think it's also, uh, important to note that, you know, the concerns about, uh, sidewalks and, uh, things are real, right? Like, we've had multiple discussions at this table about, uh, um, about equity and about, uh, not, um, you know, wanting to decriminalize things, wanting to take minor charges that are hard to enforce away, so that we don't have these, these traps that we set for people. And in this sense, I think we're, we're, we're just creating another unenforceable or hard-to-enforce, uh, ordinance on the books that, that is unnecessary. Uh, who's gonna, we're gonna have a special, uh, tobacco police, uh, unit that's gonna go around, uh, ensuring people aren't smoking on a sidewalk? Um, you know, if I went to Riverside Park and I wanted to, uh, you know, go fishing and just throw my line in the water and I, you know, wanted to have a cigarette, and I carefully took care of the button, threw it in a trash receptacle, and I was hundreds of feet from anyone else in the park, I don't see how that's harming anyone. I could certainly see that we could have a, a setback requirement from a, uh, pavilion or playground space or a splash pad. But the idea that we're gonna outlaw people from just, uh, smoking in a park when there are no secondhand impacts to the people around them, if done appropriately, I find that just, it's certainly, that's a government overreach, and, uh, so I, I'm certainly against this ordinance as written, and, uh, I hope that, uh, there could be some, some changes made, uh, or it just be what it is.
Thank you, Commissioner. Alright, others who, uh, wish to speak on this? Uh, Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Commissioner O'Connor makes a gr- a great point. Uh, I am one of those who enjoys smoking a cigar on a golf course. Uh, sometimes I, I, I may walk the streets and smoke a cigar. It all depends on where I'm at. Uh, I, I do agree that there are some precedents that are being made in reference to this ordinance, uh, and I do understand the public's concern. Uh, and so just hearing what O'Connor said, I do think that now, as I think about it a little bit more clearly, we are making a little bit of an overreach, uh, in reference to taking something away from the public that I think is important, especially those who may not have the means to go indoors to smoke, uh, especially those who are living homeless, who grab a cigarette from time to time, or even a cigar. Uh, so I do understand, and I am one who, uh, 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 will be in a position to say, I gotta choose between one or the other. I will probably do that. I would hate not to be at Indian Trails golfing. Uh, I would hate not, I would hate to go to Clothman's or some other place to give them my money. I prefer to support the city.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lanier, I know, um, we are, this conversation, uh, it's been going on for quite some time, uh, with our Parks Advisory Committee, uh, and others in the community, so Commissioner Lanier?
Yeah, I, I, I do think that Commissioner O'Connor is.
Yeah, I, I do think that Commissioner O'Connor is making some valid points. I know when we were having the conversation about fire pits, which you were championing at that time, it was actually reminding us that we were looking at a, a clean air ordinance. And so I think that there is value to the health and well-being of the, the people who are living in our city, as well as visiting our city, that we would have a clean air ordinance on the books. And I do, you know, I'd have to go back because it's been a while since I've looked at the multiple components of, it was actually during the public hearing, of the, of the ordinance, but I am curious, and David, maybe this is a question for you, about the sidewalk component that has come up during public comment this evening, and the concern that some have mentioned about arbitrarily, people, there being winners and losers as it, as it relates to who will then be stopped as they're on the sidewalk and who may not. And if there's a way to consistently have that component of the policy to be administered across the board, and so if you could speak to that, that would be great to hear. I, I also think that there is room to have amendments that provide some exclusion to locations like Indian Trails and even Riverside Park for, for, you know, the, the example that you used about fishing there. And so, but I don't know how you go about doing that without singling out each and every single park and the areas within the park. And that's when I think you get to the point where government is overreaching. So I don't know how we can best do that. I think some of the concerns that are coming up tonight are new for me to hear, which doesn't then allow us as much time to be able to consider other alternatives to, for those concerns. So I'm curious to hear, David, what you, your understanding of what people were sharing during public comment earlier, and the response to the concerns that they have.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mayor, and City Manager, and Commissioners. The, the definition of streets and sidewalks does exist within this proposed amended ordinance under the definition of recreational places. That is a definition that we received as a municipality from language from the state of Michigan, health professionals, and from health professionals at the University of Michigan, that helped us craft this ordinance language. I completely understand the concerns and, and the feel of overreach. I can understand why that would be problematic in some people's minds. I think it's important to remember the context of, of why we embarked on this process under the leadership of the Kent County Health Department, and that was for the protection of the young people and the families that are using our valued park spaces, that we've spent a great deal of time and money investing in over the last six years, and will continue to do now moving forward, the vote of the people from last November. And, and we took our time, yes, we took our time to do this, to ensure that we were hearing public voices in this matter. And, you know, we spent the better part of two to three years piloting this, this opportunity in 28 individual parks across the entire city of Grand Rapids, and in all three wards. And under those piloted projects, what we heard loud and clear was, well over 85% of those surveyed during that pilot phase, supported this effort and these, these proposed amendments. So this really isn't coming out of nowhere, that we're, we're not doing this on our own and, and trying to do a power grab by any means, but we are trying to be responsive to public desire. And, and I know we've heard some of the, of the contrary this evening as well. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I think it provides the historical context. I'm, I'm curious to know more about the language you receive from the state, and then how will it be administered. And, and I think the concern is that, that at least what I was hearing in the comments, the notes that I've taken, is that it potentially could impact communities of color worse than others, because, you know, unfortunately, our policing methods have yielded us, you know, inequitable, inequitable manner policing communities of color at a higher rate as it relates to stop and tickets and other, other things. So we certainly wouldn't want this to be another example of inequity. So I'm just curious to know, how do you foresee it being administered in the event that there are some violations?
Mayor, may, may, may I also add to Director Mark Quat's comment before he comes, before he responds? We, we've addressed that before, that our approach is to begin with education as, as a way of compliance and ensuring wellness, that we are known, by no means are trying to make this high priority enforcement, high priority calls to criminalize smoking. And so I think the department is prepared to, matter of fact, administratively, ensure the compliance and seeking compliance with the ordinance, and I'll let Director Mark Quat speak to that. I also want to add some context to what we've seen, not only from the, the internal responses within our community from the residents, but also across park systems from across the country, that there are communities that have either banned utilization of tobacco products and smoking products throughout the entire park system, and the exceptions that we have seen in other communities have been for golf courses. So we, we have looked into that as well, and as you've heard some comments tonight, that, that, that could be one of the exceptions. And I just want to clarify for, for some members of the community that when we're talking about sidewalks, we're talking about those sidewalks that, that are in the park recreational area, that may not necessarily just be adjacent to the street, but that may be internally, in, in many cases, or in some cases, right adjacent to the playground itself. Director Mark Quat?
Yes, all of those remarks are exactly correct, and I appreciate you sharing those, City Manager. This has always been, from the outset, the goal to be educational and awareness, and that is the way in which the pilot was run, and, and run with great success. The feedback that we received was very positive, and those that participated in our surveys remarked that, you know, that the, the educational campaign worked very well with the signage that we had posted within those pilot parks, and the way in which neighbors and residents essentially self-policed on this, on this ordinance was rather remarkable and, and well received. So that is the approach that we would take on this, education and awareness first and foremost, not at all intended to be punitive, nor affecting those that, that may otherwise be disadvantaged.
Thank you, and thank you, City Managers, for the clarification on the sidewalks being within the park's boundaries or adjacent boundaries. I move to make an amendment to exclude the golf course from the ordinance amendment, amended ordinance, season.
Support.
All right, so there's a, an amendment before us to remove the golf course from the language. I do have explicit language related to that from our City Attorney's Office, knowing that that was a concern that was raised last time that we were together. So if, if you would like, I can read that, and that could be the amended, the proposed amendment language. Commissioner Lanier, are you comfortable with that?
I appreciate it. Thank you so much, Mayor.
You're welcome. So this would amend Chapter 71, Section 6.3.8.15. It would be modified to remove golf courses from the definition of recreation area, and would state in whole that recreational, and will now state in whole, a recreation area means any public or private area open to the public for recreational purposes, whether or not any fee for admission is charged, including but not limited to streets, sidewalks, amusement parks, athletic fields, beaches, fairgrounds, gardens, parks, plazas, skate parks, swimming pools, trails, and zoos. Recreation areas do not include golf courses. And then whereas the next section will be added to include a fifth category where smoking is not regulated, and will state as follows, golf courses will be exempt for structures located therein.
And Mayor, that language is consistent with what Director Mark Quat put in the staff report on page 153 in the packet. So that, that's not new language, that's consistent with his report.
Yes, thank you. And it's, it's been reviewed by our Attorney's Office as well. So that is the amendment proposed by Commissioner Lanier, supported by Commissioner Moody. So any specific comments or questions on the amended language or the amendment before us? Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Basically, what we're saying is if I have enough money to, to go golfing at a golf course that's barely physically sustainable, that's cool, I can have a cigarette, but if I'm one of our oldest folks living down at Preckage Park or at Hartide Park, you can't smoke there anymore.
We're not gonna entertain that sarcastic remark with the response.
That's not sarcastic, that's the truth. We have, I mean, have we driven by either of these parks? We can't control people from urinating in parks at this point, but we're gonna go ahead and say we're gonna stop them from smoking?
It's, obviously, Commissioner O'Connor, you do not agree with this amendment. You can vote no on it. So other, other questions or comments related to this amendment, before I ask our City Clerk to call the vote on the amendment, and then we can consider the amended ordinance. All right, Commissioner Repart?
Yeah, can I, I mean, I don't, I didn't ask this question earlier, but can, can we, can I get an answer as to why we did include cannabis in this, when the, when the, I mean, the state doesn't say that you can't smoke in a park, but it does say that you can consume cannabis publicly. So what can I, I don't think, I don't think we've had a, a comment about that, about why that was included in this ordinance, when it's already regulated by the state.
Yeah, City Attorney, do you want to speak to that? Oh, you're on mute.
I believe this is part of the discussion and request from our Executive Office. David, can you add to that?
Yes, City Attorney and, and City Manager might want to jump in here as well. We did have discussion about whether or not to include this language because of the state's already in place language. The decision was made to include this for, for clarity purposes, as I understand it.
It does.
City Manager, City Attorney, anything to add?
No, that's correct. It is consistent with state law, so we're not doing anything contrary to state law.
Okay, it's just adding it so that it's clear that it's aligned with state law?
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions or comments, and then I'll ask the City Clerk to call the vote on the amendment? Okay, seeing none. City Clerk, this is on the amendment.
Commissioner O'Connor?
No.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Hi.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, Commissioners, now the amended ordinance is before us. Any final questions or comments? All right, Commissioner Lanier?
Mayor, so I, I do think despite his sarcasm tonight, I just think that Commissioner O'Connor made a valid point regarding Riverside Park and the river and people who may be utilizing the river for recreation, like fishing. And I don't know, again, this is new, so I'm asking the question without having had any time myself to think through it, but I wonder if there's a way to exempt river activity or something along those lines with some distancing between person-to-person contact, because I do think that, that, you know, there are people who would be utilizing the river for recreational purposes, like fishing, and, and, you know, may want to enjoy smoking while they're doing so. And I don't think that that would be, that would cause harm too, because I think the space is where the river will be. And I'm, I'm thinking futuristically, because we're, we are restoring the, the rapids and trying to make the river a destination in our city. And so, you know, may be valuable in having some exemption for river activity. And maybe that's tonight, or maybe that's, you know, bringing that back at a different time, but I do think it's worth having the conversation if anyone is aware or done any research on that.
Yeah, and maybe City Manager David could speak to that. I would think that anything in, I don't know if anything in the river would be considered park space. So if somebody is kayaking or in a fishing boat or in the river, I don't, I don't know if that would, I've never considered that parkland or park space. So I don't know whether you want to speak to that.
So Mayor, when we began embarking on this, we were thinking about parkland. We were not thinking about river activity in terms of regulating what happens in, in the water, unless it was specifically within a park. And I know we have some, some water spots within a couple of parks. So I'm not prepared to, at, at this point, speak to what other policies we could make along the river, along the river's edges, because it's more than just Riverside Park we'd be talking about. There are several other parks that, that along the river. But I'm not prepared for, for, to support that, but if Mr. Mark Quat's aware of any other considerations for that activity, we could certainly research it and bring it back to you, but I'm not aware of any staff work in that area.
And, and perhaps, City Manager, this is something that we can consider as we move forward with the river activation and restoration work?
We can certainly consider that, Mayor.
Okay. David, anything to add related to that question?
No, the City Manager is correct. There is no, that was never the intent to, to, you know, prohibit this activity within our waterway, our river waterway. And so he is right, we could look at this in the future as we continue to make improvements along that important corridor.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, any final comments? Commissioner Moody?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say to the City Manager and to David, thank you for the clarity, because for a moment there, we, looking at sidewalks, you were, it was not mentioned that it was park sidewalks. I think the community would have had the impression that it meant any sidewalk. So I think clarity is so important, and trying to make it simple so that the community will understand, that's another important key as well. So I appreciate everything that you said tonight, City Manager and David, but I think clarity has to be the key focus of helping our community understand that when we are voting on a particular ordinance, that it really needs to be broken down and kind of made simple.
Thank you, Commissioner. And from what I recall, last time, I know that there are a number of community partners that have been working with the Parks Department on this, and I will trust that they will continue to work to make sure that there's clarity and, and FAQ, and if anyone has any questions, they have resources to make sure that they fully understand what, what this ordinance potentially could mean. All right, final comments. All right, I will turn to our City Clerk to call the question.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Hi.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor? Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, Commissioners, that will take us to our scheduled public hearing tonight, and this is a public hearing to consider the removal of 470 Market Avenue Southwest from the Grand Rapids Smart Zone Local Development Finance Authority's Certified Technology Park Boundary. So the purpose of this hearing is to consider this request, and the notice of this hearing has been made in writing pursuant to state law. So what I'd like to do tonight is have Mr. Klooster share with us a little background on this and why it's being brought forward. We'll see if there's anyone else that has joined us tonight to speak to this item, and then we'll open it up for public comment. So Mr. Klooster, you want to tell us about this?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So there is extensive background in the memo that's in your packet, but I, I will provide a brief, high-level overview. The property at the corner of Godfrey and Market Avenue Southwest, 470 Market, was added to the Certified Technology Park and the Smart Zone in 2016, and that was added with 61 other properties at that time. In general, the intent of adding those properties to the Smart Zones District was to be able to work collaboratively with the owners or operators, should the opportunity arise, consistent with the goals of the with the goals of the Smart Zone. The purpose of adding those properties was not and is not to increase the tax increment revenues for the Smart Zones operations. So 470 Market was added as there were initial conversations about using that property for co-working space or incubator space. That is not materialized and the property continues to sit vacant. 3F Properties, which is a real estate development and management firm out of Chicago, has an option to purchase the property and is proposing a $32 million redevelopment of that property to create 167 apartment units. The property, as you've heard from that developer several times, is contaminated and functionally obsolete. It does qualify for Brownfield program, and both the City Commission and the Brownfield Authority have approved the developer's request for assistance in cleaning up and redeveloping that property. In order for the Brownfield Authority's incentive to function as intended, the property must be removed from the Smart Zones Certified Technology Park. So from a legislative perspective, this can be done by action of the City Commission upon notice to all the appropriate parties, which we have done. It does not require an amendment to the Tax Incumbent Financing and Development Plan of the Smart Zone. And although not required, we have presented this action to and received the support of the Smart Zone Board. So they're fully informed and supportive of this action. And after the public hearing tonight and taking any questions, we would bring this back to you for consideration of approval at your next meeting. So I'll be happy to answer any questions with that.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Klooster?
We lost Commissioner Jones, he's trying to get back on.
Yeah, he just texted me and said he got booted off of WebEx, so hopefully he'll be able to get back on. He's familiar with this item, as he is our representative who serves on the Smart Zone, and so has been part of these conversations leading up until now. Okay, seeing no questions, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comments. So if you are wanting to speak to this item, you can call 456-3000 or 311, hit number one and then number two. So Daniel, do we have anyone who wishes to be heard on this item?
Here comes the first caller.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes, your time starts now.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Goberber, more housekeeping. I was given by, I called in 311 today to get the access codes and the phone numbers to listen in on the hearing, on a meeting, and the phone number was correct, but they gave me a false access code of 1738479046. So I haven't been able to listen into the meeting and be tuned to be able to sign up for the next hearing. Last time, it was also a mess. Starting hearing, number one opportunity, people were cut off massively until about five minutes before. Now, we know there would have been a lot of call-ins because of all the letters you got, protest letters you got in, and Deanna Taylor. So that was falsely and possibly probably illegally handled.
The caller, no, we're talking about the public hearing for 470 Market Avenue?
Indeed, I do, but don't you, how can people listen to the hearing if they're given a false access code? Should be able, I should have been, my fellow citizens, they shouldn't have listened to the term meeting, okay? And that was bungled, given the wrong, and I gave you the wrong code. On this particular item, city bus service is adequate. You don't need particular bus lanes there, as you do in a parallel Granville-Kai Park route, at least from Burton to Hall during fresh hours. But the, that is a West Side route, and toward the Catholic West Side, and we have no bus routes to our Catholic hospital, St. Mary's, they're more than essentially the Jefferson area. Jefferson is a war boundary, as you know, and two hospitals there, so why not extend your crutch kicker, the 18, east to Jefferson or so, and one-way loop and then swing back west following the same route? That would be a great amenity. It would be helpful if we knew who's the driving force in the first place changed the zoning, and now apparently zoning wants to be changed back. Who's the driving force and the particular city commissioner who's pushing this? Why is it being changed around? Thank you very much. And again, we're cut off, we can't hear the meeting, so I'll be calling back in on 456 3000 for the next hearing. Thank you so much for reporting.
Thank you, caller. There are no more callers in the queue, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and close that public hearing, and it will be referred back to Committee of the whole. All right, that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight. Again, you can call 311 or 456-3000, hit number one and then number five. So Daniel, we'll open up our last opportunity for public comment.
Here comes the first caller.
There are no more callers in the queue, Mayor.
Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device?
I'm going to close that public.
Thank you, you have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hi, this is Parker, I live in Grand Rapids. I am watching live, I must be a little off, so I don't know exactly where we are.
This is the public comment portion, go ahead caller, you have three minutes.
Okay, just a public comment. You know, I've seen, you know, I've seen gas stations sell cigarettes for years in their tobacco stores, and I think regulating like cigarettes on the streets is not a bad idea for some areas, specifically for medical, because you never know who's going to have an asthma attack, or just how comfortable they are with it. Maybe they're receiving, you know, maybe they have symptoms from smoking, and that can, that can be a detrimental thought in some categories. But more importantly, I just think that like cigarettes in general could be sold in better places, and that's just something that like, you know, if you've never thought of it, maybe you could look into it, like bars, restaurants, gas stations, could use maybe a little bit more medicine behind the counter. But it's pretty much all I have to comment on, so.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes, your time starts now.
Hi, this is Callan, I'm from Grand Rapids. I called earlier today, I am extremely disappointed in the vote that was given by the City Commission. I think that it's really not very good. If you look in the actual writing of the amendment, it does not make the distinction between park sidewalks and regular sidewalks. So while the city manager may say, hey, I'm going to only do this for the sidewalks, another city manager and/or the city manager right now could possibly do it for anywhere around the city. So it is written that way in the terms of which, that it can be used on any sidewalk, any street within Grand Rapids City. So I think that you've made a horrible mistake, and I just cannot believe that you guys would be so, like you wouldn't even read the ordinance before you voted on it. Holy crap, is all I'm saying, you know? Like, do your job, but, okay, well, thank you for having me.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes, your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Martha Burt, I'm living in the city of Grand Rapids. I've been watching the city commission meeting and just getting sicker. Yeah, so I wanted to call again and talk about homelessness, and I'm watching these ordinances. You all voted yes, except for John, I believe, but John, at least this time, I agreed with him about the overstepping and about the petty crimes and about the, but truthfully, what it really is on the cigarette ordinance outside has nothing to do with indoor air, and apparently it has nothing to do with breathing the smoke, because if COVID only travels so many feet, when you exhale your smoke, you know, how far does that go? So we're talking sidewalks and everything, who uses sidewalks? Everybody. Who will be enforcing this? The police? Didn't we have enough for them to do? Were we supposed to kind of cut down on petty things for them to do? And why are we going to take, in the middle of pandemic, when we are in the red zone, going to take money out of COVID money and put it to a spot shotter? A spot shotter is only after the crime happened, and this city is behind on development and investment in the southeast side where a lot of the crime is happening. So what we're seeing is the lack of investment, and all that lack of investment was over a period of time and only found recently. You owe these folks, you owe this community. You don't want to defund the police and fund the community and quit trying to criminalize people who are struggling, all right? If I get popped on the sidewalk, you think I'm going to have to fine? Okay, I probably am not. And you want to talk about golf courses and being able to smoke on a golf course where it just is so shiningly, just unbelievably elite, and we are struggling down here, we're not going to have any pandemic relief? People are going to be evicted, you haven't dealt with homeless crisis except to put up fences, tear down at $55,000 for the Downtown Development Authority, something that somebody can stay dry under. You make sure that they're shut out of the parks and they can't plug in their government phone because they can't get any electricity. There's no water in the park, and it's a pandemic, and they can't wash their hands. Now, if you don't think that in a city that's been busted for profiling, that this ordinance on the cigarette isn't part of being able to pull somebody over and find out who they are, hey, it's kind of like this. The people aren't stupid, not coming straight out and saying what's true, and some of you came real close. This is one time I actually agreed with John O'Connor, the nanny state is right, but it's not about that, it's about revenueing off of the people. Mark Washington, you should be fired. You are not solving problems, you're creating them. And you're creating more conflict.
Thank you, caller, that's three minutes, thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes, your time starts now. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes, your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Mark, I'm from Grand Rapids. And this, this smoking on this road, if Jim Lee and you can go outside of a stadium and smoke, and smoke a lung out before a baseball game, it should be, it should not be to have any inconvenience to anybody else. Now, on this gun buyback program, I think this gun buyback program is a ridiculous move, we're always at it and always will be. You're not doing, you're not doing anything but giving the criminals more ammunition to go out and do what they do, and that's commit crime. So, so if I was you, just eliminate the whole gun buyback thing. Now, as far as this, this stuff involving these scooters, this thing involving these scooters and stuff, shouldn't that money be more allocated to go into the police precincts? Because safety is paramount in here, and 200,000 bucks for some scooters is a ridiculous move. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Mayor, there are no more callers in the queue.
Thank you, Daniel. I will go ahead and turn to my colleagues then, and how about we start tonight with Commissioner Repart?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge the grant that we got for lead service line replacements this week, which is just an absolute huge win for the city. We've been chipping along at that to the best of our ability, this will allow us to move so much faster, and big, big congratulations to the team that worked on that grant proposal, and encourage people to lean in and pay attention to our discussion on Friday. Some of the confusion around Cares funding and around violence prevention, you know, we'll have more information presented to us, and those things will become more clear, and we'll have a discussion with each other about, about what to do next. So very important discussion, please tune in, hopefully you're able to do that this Friday. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Moody?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate everybody that called in tonight and all of their comments and their concerns. I know, once again, one of the most important things that I think is important is to always try to make whatever we do as simply as we possibly can so that the community can understand. I appreciate everything that was said tonight, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to make these comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. How about Commissioner Lanier?
Thank you, everyone who came out this evening to speak on our agenda and bring public comment and for the hearings. That's all.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to thank folks for calling in on this evening. I, a couple of things, one is I would like to really speak to those who are listening regarding the pandemic and the fact that when it comes to dollars for any sort of relief, I just want to encourage folks to please contact the county, county, as they are the entity that is positioned to oversee the dollars, the primary dollars that are coming in that are addressing COVID-19. Whether it's business relief, whether it's eviction prevention, all of these things are going to lead you back to a county. And I think that I just want to encourage residents and those who are listening to please contact your county commissioner or even the county administrator to get clarity about what dollars are available. I know for a fact that we here at the city are doing all that we can with the resources that we do have to meet the needs, all the needs that we possibly can, but again, our bandwidth is limited based on the fact that the funding is primarily in the hands of the county. And so I really want to encourage folks to reach out to the county. Also want to encourage all the, all those who are listening, I'm sure we're all seeing that the numbers are going up dramatically in terms of infection rates in our county, throughout the state, throughout the country, and we ought to have real concern about how the numbers are trending up. I just want to encourage folks to stick to the basics of wearing a mask and staying six feet apart, washing your hands, and just really staying out of perhaps large groups. This is getting to be, it's actually at a point now where you have expectant health reported that this is the highest number of COVID cases that they have in the hospitals, which is scary, because at the height of the pandemic, a couple of months ago, those numbers weren't as high in terms of the number of patients in the hospitals, but those numbers are trending upward, and we just ought to really, really be concerned, because the last thing that we want is to go back to having a shutdown. But I think if we're not careful, we may indeed be going in that direction. So I just really want to encourage folks to, to take all the necessary precautions, because this thing clearly is no joke. So, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Keep telling all of our fellow Grand Rapidsians to mask up, that we are still under a MDHHS order to do that, and strongly encourage folks, as you said, to continue to comply. Let's see, Commissioner Estasi?
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly echo Commissioner Jones's comments about the pandemic and what we're seeing in this, in this community. We, the last time we had a meeting, we were talking about polling sites at GRPS and prepping for alternate locations, and now they are going virtual into the next semester. So I think more than anything, what this shows is that things are changing rapidly, and to make sure that you're getting your information from good sources, so going to our city website, calling 311 to answer any questions that you have, and to certainly in the coordination and connection with our health department. I come into these meetings and I think about how government wasn't created for many people that we're representing, and we often see that in the, in the calls and the responses that we get and the messages today. And I just want people to know, I encourage you to continue to call and to connect, because while we're prepping for an election next week, your engagement with our city government, city staff, all of us, is just important to create a more and better, perfect city. I'm often reminded that change is incremental, that it can be absolutely frustrating. frustrating, um, and you know, things like looking at five hundred thousand dollars from the county coming into a specific program when we requested something very specifically that research that had been done more than five years ago to show, um, you know, what the community needs in terms of trauma, trauma supports, mental health, um, it's, it's extremely frustrating and so, you know, and, but then how do we say no to money when we know we need money and support to do things and we know what we're facing in terms of revenues from the state and other thing and just revenues overall with our city? So I'm, I'm reminded tonight more than ever that this is uh, government is increment- we have incremental change, it's, it's not always perfect and it can be frustrating, I, I know for residents and also for many of us on the commission. Um, but I think that through discourse and conflict, we come out with better solutions and better options. So you have, you know, neighbors, you have a chance to continue to do that, not just by calling in tonight, but by voting uh next week and we will make, we are doing everything. Um, as city clerk uh likes to say, it's, it's, it's not just the clerk's office, it's so many other people um that are part of city staff and I was on the ninth floor today and there was just a continuation of people coming in all the time. And I would just remind our, our neighbors who are voting, just to, to make sure you have grace and patience, um, the process is very, is very efficient, uh, but it's a lot of people, it's, it's just a lot of things going on. So I just wanna say thank you to those that were up there on the ninth floor because I, I heard some people who were, who were a little frustrated and I, I think our city staff just, are just doing a great job to make people feel comfortable, there's a lot of anxiety going into, into next week. Um, and you can also turn in, you know, to um, I think what Commissioner Ruppert talked about, you know, on Friday when we have our session and so I think this is where we talk, you know, sometimes it looks like we're focusing on one thing and then, you know, maybe on Friday you'll be able to see this bigger picture as we go into the next year into our budget cycle, so um, so I'm just looking forward to next week and uh we'll, we'll probably be getting ready for an election week for, versus an election night, so thank you.
Thanks Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, let's start with, with smoking again, uh, you know, despite my perceived sarcasm, uh, I mean, I'm pretty adamant and I think consistent when I say I just don't like it when we create laws or ordinances uh that we're not going to enforce or we don't have the ability to enforce and, you know, I think this smoking ordinance is one of those things that, you know, we don't have the resources to handle a lot of things in our community and now we add another layer of uh, of restriction that we don't have the resources to adequately control, uh, and there's a plethora of examples of things that we're currently not controlling that are ordinances in Grand Rapids, whether that's, you know, drinking in parks or loitering and there's, there's just tons of examples and so I just, I just, I feel that's problematic and uh I need to call it out even if it comes across as sarcastic, cause that's somewhat my nature most of the time. Um, as it relates to COVID, uh, you know, I, I echo the caller, the comments of my colleagues uh, and this real, uh, I, I can't thank the city enough and I know a variety of people throughout our committee, the community uh have been uh, um, both thankful and benefiting from uh a lot of that stuff, the work we did uh and our administrative team did to allow for outdoor seating options for our hospitality industry uh throughout the summer months. Um, you know, it's looked outside the last few days or few weeks, uh, you know, while we approved some more social districts today, which are great and I'm thankful that we have, and I know a lot of my restaurant tour and hospitality friends are thankful that we've extended those, uh, you know, that the opportunities to be outside uh despite our toughness as Midwesterners is, is quickly coming to a close and so uh, you know, there's a lot of apprehension about uh what the future looks like, you know, we had a lot of apprehension when COVID hit, but there were a lot of, uh, there was a lot of focus on how we handled the uh, the pandemic at that time, there were a lot of uh, a lot of resources coming to people uh and to, to uh folks about, on helping them navigate and try to deal with it. Um, and most of those things are exhausted now and uh outdoor opportunities and now things we can do as a local unit of government are, are, are kinda gone, we've lost some of our flexibility now because of the weather and uh, so I guess I would just encourage folks to con- to keep going out uh and, and, you know, frequenting establishments of, you know, whether it's hospitality or retail or, or just of any local business that you can uh and, and, and support them and spend your money because this is, uh, this is the difficult time, this is, you know, this, this winter is going to be very telling, uh, we continue to see uh bankruptcies and uh businesses closing in Grand Rapids and so these folks in our in Grand Rapids need your support now more than ever. Uh, I'm thrilled about the news today about, uh, about Perrigo relocating to our community. Uh, it's, it's great to see continued investment in the, in the medical mile and uh people, you know, despite global economic concerns, uh, still willing and wanting to invest in Grand Rapids because I think we are a community that, uh, that supports uh development and jobs and uh, and, and the creation of opportunities for people. Um, and uh, and lastly, just tell you, Tuesday's a pretty important day, uh, we, we say that about every election, uh, I just want to ensure people that uh, you know, our, our team here at the city, our clerk's office, all our poll workers, uh, you know, they're really putting their best foot forward and wanna provide you a safe and uh, uh, opportunity to go to the polls, if you don't feel safe, we will do everything in our power to help you uh to feel safe and protected uh while you're there exercising your right to vote and um, you know, thank your poll workers, it's uh kind of a scary time to sit in a building with hundreds, if not thousands, of people coming through the door during a pandemic, uh, you know, they're putting themselves at risk so that you can, you know, exercise your rights, so, thank them when you're there.
Thank you Commissioner. Uh, let's see, let's start with our city attorney, uh, city attorney, any comments tonight?
Just to say for everyone to have a good evening and please make sure you vote.
Thank you. Uh, city clerk?
I got nothing, no, I'm kidding. Um, no, th- this morning we had, I, I gave a very full report, those who weren't, if the community wasn't able to watch this stuff on our social media, they um, um, they put, put it together as a um report to the community, um, also with a statement talking about how um harassment, intimidation and how the city is preparing, um, will be prepared and is prepared for election day, how we've, that we will not take any intimidation, we will not take um harassment lightly, we wanna make sure that it is a safe environment to, for voters to vote, whether they're voting by absentee, whether they're, they're voting in person. Our inspectors have been trained what to do, um, and, and to be that first line and we will have rapid response of, of city staff out if we, if they need to. I think, I think it's gonna be a good day, um, on election day for um us to come together as a community to um have serious fun, I mean, it is a community event as well, but we're gonna be doing it obviously um socially distanced and um with masks and we just ask for everybody to, as we said earlier, you know, um, with, with patience, with understanding, uh, but we, we know this is, elections are, are serious, um, important, um, business and we just wanna make sure that we um, we take it that important, but it also is a community event as well. So with the, when we put those two things together, uh, I, I think we're looking forward to a, a great day and just to remember that also, uh, we talked about how we have such a high number of absentee events that have, uh, have been returned and Commissioner Sassi saw, um, people voting absentee all day today, um, those will, there'll be less people going to the precincts on election day. Um, but we do have to physically distance as well, so just keep those things in mind, um, help your neighbor out if they need some assistance, if they're um asking questions about um how to vote the ballot, let's all work together as one big city team, thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, city clerk. Uh, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you commissioners for your, uh, your deliberation throughout the day and uh I wanna thank the staff for their work, uh, I just wanna remind um the public and the commission that many of the issues that uh have been talked about tonight that were not on the agenda, such as uh dealing with other areas in the park and homelessness, are opportunities for us to continue to discuss those policy issues on um Friday and determine what we are going to do in the short term as well as long term as we continue to manage our way through the pandemic and so uh would invite the, the public to uh watch and as well as comment uh at the conclusion of the work session on Friday, uh, as well as, I wanna thank the uh police department for continuing to um respond to uh some of the issues regarding the uptick in gun violence and, and both in preventative work as well as response work. Uh, you've heard the earlier uh briefing during the public safety committee about the um gun buyback program and uh the next uh buyback will be on the seventh and we'll talk about that a little bit on Friday as well around resourcing that, as well as um our, our um approaches to be preventative and do other uh proactive crime prevention, um, take other crime prevention strategies, so look forward to the conversation on Friday and hope everyone have a, has a good night tonight.
Thank you, city manager. Uh, just a, a couple of final, final comments and to echo what some of my colleagues said, uh, we do have a really important election coming up on weekends today and uh I'm gonna add my voice of assurance to our community that we are well-prepared, we have an incredible team, uh, not just internally here at the city, but a lot of community partners and we will be ensuring a safe election and that every person who shows up at the precincts will be able to safely exercise their right to vote. Uh, you know, I, I can't stress enough what Commissioner Jones and others have said about the pandemic, we are not out of the woods yet, uh, we need to continue to support one another uh through this time, but also follow medical recommendations with wearing a mask and keeping your social distance. Uh, this is a hard time for individuals and for families and for our businesses, as Commissioner O'Connor said, uh, I've heard just this week from two locally owned businesses who will not be um able to keep their doors open uh as of next month. Uh, so as we all go into the holiday season, uh, and we make decisions with how we spend our dollars, I strongly encourage you to support our local businesses and shop local. Uh, big announcement today with Perrigo, I was ecstatic to hear that, um, this has uh been in the works for several months and a lot of people made that happen, so I just wanna give a shout out to not just our city team, but also the Right Place and our partners at the state who really came together, um, this was a competitive process and I am absolutely delighted that they selected Grand Rapids as their North American headquarters and that is a, a really wonderful thing for our city. Uh, and then, and then lastly, commissioners, I don't know if you've heard, I heard uh late yesterday, um, that a really incredible member of our community, many of us have worked with for a long time, passed away and that's Tom Kuzier, uh, so he was a member of the team at our POA, but uh many of us worked with him as he served on our planning commission uh for many, many years and was a really strong voice and partner in a lot of the work that we've done over the years, um, not just through our planning department, but here in the city, so just wanted to let you know if you hadn't heard, um, but also just publicly thank him for his service and all that he contributed to our community um and to our planning commission. Uh, and with that, commissioners, I will go ahead and close this meeting tonight uh and wish you all a few relaxing days until we come back together, as the city manager said, for a full day together on Friday for our mid-year retreat and so I will look forward to seeing you all then.